Good afternoon. It's Wednesday, March 8th, 2023. This is a school board workshop and the time is 1:15. Board member Patrica is under the weather and will be participating possibly by phone this afternoon pursuant to Board Policy 1.11. Today on the agenda, we have review of the Neola Policies 1000, which is Administration, 3000, which is Instructional Staff, and 4000, which is Support Staff. We will begin with a review of the Neola Policies 1000 Administration. Kathy Bruno De Pay, please introduce our presenters. Is she here?
Good afternoon, Board members. I'm here today because our Neola, rest of our Neola team was not able to make it. So Ms. Vasquez and I are going to fulfill that spot for Mr. Young today. So with us as always is our Neola consultant, Mr. Tom Young. And Ms. Vasquez and I will continue to track everything on the screen as we've done in the past, and I will turn it over to Mr. Young with the Administrative Policies 1000.
Thank you, Kathy. Good afternoon, Board members. It's nice to see you again. As we have done in the past, it is, it is accustomed or customary for me to say to you, Board members, have you questions regarding the 1000 series? Hearing none, we'll move on to the 3000s. Oh.
No. That was good.
Yes, Mr. Fisher.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Young. Real quick, on, I went through most of these already with Attorney DePree Bruno, but going to item or policy, 1,112, if we could go there, please, Board Staff Communication.
Yes.
Okay, it's more of just a definition, going down the social interaction, going down to, in the third paragraph there, I'm just trying to find. Second to last sentence, where it goes, however, since individual board members have no authority, et cetera, et cetera. It gets down to the part that said, board members should not discuss personalities, personal grievances, et cetera. What is your definition of personalities? Sorry.
Um.
Or generally accepted?
Generally accepted definition of personalities, to me, it would be that they should not discuss individuals and their individual characteristics as it relates to an issue which is before the Board, or, if you don't like that language, it is not in law, it is considered by some districts a best practice, some districts use it and some don't.
Because I don't see that stated within, under the accompanying ones for staff and instructional personnel, so, if I recall for that, for the similar items. I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, so.
Well, they, they should be consistent. There would not be a good reason that I can think of why there would be a different standard for administrators than there would be for teachers or support staff.
Okay. Okay. Um.
So do we, do we need to look at that and see if we can make them consistent? Or is, is the Board uncomfortable with that section? To my way of thinking, it, if it serves a purpose for you, if it is instructive, good, if not, there, there would be no legal harm in deleting it.
I, I'm fine with the section as a whole, it was just that one word.
Okay, well.
It just seemed kind of ambiguous to me.
Do you have another word which you would like to suggest?
Usually I do, in this instance, I don't. Um, let me, can I come back to that one? And I think the accompanying one again is in the 3000s and 4000s.
How about if, if, just as, just as I throw it out there, how about if, if we substitute the word individuals for personalities?
That's fine. If the, I don't know, if the rest of the Board.
It does not seem to raise any eyebrows.
No.
So if it satisfies Mr. Fisher and the Board members don't have an objection, we'll change personalities to individuals.
Okay. Next up, if you're ready, sir?
Yes, sir.
Outside Activities of Administrators?
Yes.
Okay. It goes down to, I guess it would be the second paragraph, even so it's a sentence. Administrators may not dedicate work time to an outside interest activity or association. So what would happen then essentially, and I mean, maybe this is also Dr. Bernier question, let's say if they're part of a Rotary or something like that, or another club, how does that fit in with this?
I don't think that, that that section would be interpreted, or should be interpreted to, to prevent an individual from providing services to organizations like that. I think it's more intended to be a, a regular consumption of time for pay that would detract from the individual's responsibilities with the district. Again, the law does not require that. If that, if that is problematic, it can be deleted.
Chair, Dr. Bernier has a.
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
Just as a chance to weigh in, I, I agree with you. I think that's one aspect of it, is them working for a specific amount of pay. But I think there's a big difference between being a Rotary member or a member of a chamber and going to their meeting versus using work hours to conduct work on behalf of that organization. I think what we're, I think the way I interpret this was specifically for me to go to a chamber luncheon or Horizon Council meeting is within my, within my purview. But for me to do work specifically for that organization when I'm supposed to be working, I would have to do that outside of hours.
I just wanted to double check on that, so.
That is a most reasonable interpretation.
Okay.
Ms. Jordan?
I was wanting to say too, I believe it's in their contracts as well, that they are permitted to, to belong to organizations.
Yeah, because I meant for that, let's say if they are going to, you know, like you said, that chamber luncheon during work hours or something, so, okay. Last one was just a random question of interest that, 1232, under, 123201, politi, campaigning on school grounds. I'm guessing this is by statute going down to paragraph D, no restrictions are placed. I just curious where the number of 28 signs or stickers on a, on their personal vehicle came from, it was just.
Yeah, I have no clue, Mr. Fisher.
I have no objection to it, it was just curiosity.
What, what I would like to do is, is, I'll make a note to myself to check the statute and see if the statute refers to 20 stickers, and if it doesn't, we can take that out.
It, it was just a curiosity, so.
Yes, it's curious to me as well.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you very much, Mr. Young, and thank you, Chair.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Ms. Morgan?
1030.01, Development of Administrative Procedures. First paragraph, yeah, the school board delegates to the superintendent the authority to determine whether administrative procedures will be needed to implement each of the policies adopted by the Board. When the content of the procedure meets the definition of a rule set forth in Florida Statute, Chapter 120, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board shall adopt said administrative procedure. We don't do that, and I don't understand why it's there unless it's in statute. Further, when the judgment of the superintendent adoption by the Board is advisable, the adoption of said procedure shall be recommended by the superintendent for adoption. We don't, as I said, we don't do that, I don't know where that comes from, if that's something we should be doing.
I can tell you where that comes from. It comes from the Administrative Procedures Act, the APA, and the Joint Administrative Procedures Committee, JAPSI. And it relates to what, what the def, what is the definition of a rule? If the procedure rises to the level of a rule as defined by JAPSI and the APA, then it must be consequently adopted as a policy under the APA. Policy and rule are synonymous for the purposes of this discussion. So when we were preparing these policies, we met with the Joint Administrative Procedures Committee, and they explained to us that some procedures do rise to the level of a rule in that they affect individual rights and, as such, or rights of a class, and as such, they must be adopted as a rule. Typically, all rest of your policies are not rules, unquote, but are procedures and should be managed by the superintendent and not come, not come to the Board through the APA for adoption. I don't know if that answers your question, but that's, that's how that language got in there.
I hear what you're saying, but I'd love an example, if you could provide one.
Well, in discrimination cases or, or issues, where there are procedures which must be followed, which affect due process rights, those procedures may very well rise to the level of rule and must be therefore adopted as policy rather than giving the superintendent carte blanche to change those as he or she wishes.
Okay, thank you. I, I hope that that's what we're doing. Okay. Most of the things that are here, I have already reviewed with the committee. I would like to have the opportunity at the conclusion to speak to Section 1410 about administrative salary, but that has nothing to do with the wording of this particular policy at this time, so that's it for me in Section 1.
Ms. Morgan, as a follow-up to your point when you asked Kathy, she assumed this is what she's doing. If, if she has a question about whether a particular procedure arises, rises to the level of a rule, typically what other district councils do is contact the Joint Administrative Procedures Committee and say, here's the rule, what do you think?
Yeah. Yeah. Natural progression.
Or here's the procedure.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the 1000s? Seeing none? Let's, let's move on.
I understand there were a number of questions Board members had, and I understand that they were addressed to Kathy and her staff. This is the way, this is the best way to do this, and, and I appreciate it, and I respect the way you're, you're handling this. I don't mind if you don't ask any questions.
Okay, on the 3000s, do we have any comments here? Yes, Ms. Morgan?
Both Policies, 3150, Resignation, and 3161, Fitness for Duty, have a paragraph and. Amazing. Individual. Something is blocking my screen.
Oh, yeah, there is. Same issue.
Anyway, paragraph starts, individuals who are required to submit an appropriate examination will also be required to execute a release that complies with the requirements of the Health Insurance, Portability, and Accountability Act in order to allow the report of the medical examination to be released to, and this is the question, Board/Superintendent. And the question is, why in any circumstance would any of this information be released to the Board and not just the superintendent, and then shared at the discretion of the superintendent if it were appropriate?
If your suggestion is that, that it makes sense to strike the word Board, I agree.
Okay.
I also agree with that.
Yeah, for sure.
Yes, Ms. Eubinelli?
I think the other thing on the resignation, it says the resignation shall be submitted to the school board, but it's, it's not. That's, I think that's the other piece that Ms. Morgan might be talking about, it should be to the superintendent. I mean, we don't, we don't really know until it comes before us and when we vote that they resign. I mean, and why, we don't need to know. I mean, I think, so I think that's the, that's the other commonality that you're talking about, why, it doesn't say superintendent and school board, it says submitted to the school board, that's it there. I mean, it's addressed to the, to the superintendent in writing, but, I don't know the paragraph before that, but, I mean, I don't even know why we're involved, that's all.
As I understand the intent of that, which is, as I understand it, consistent with your practice, the intent of that was that it would be submitted to the Board as information, not for action. And as I understand your current practice, what happens is that it's submitted to the superintendent, and the superintendent then submits it along with other names for the Board's information, not for action.
Ms. Jordan?
And I, and I believe that we should still keep that where we are receiving that information on that, when they do the personnel, where it shows, you know, new hires, resignation, because we really should be keeping aware of how many people are resigning and what is that. So I, I think that that's how I understood that to be.
Okay.
When I read that. They would go to him and then we'd get it.
By your, your personnel guru over here.
Yeah.
Who tells me that it is submit, that names, the names of those who have resigned is submitted with all their names in the Personnel Agenda Item, and the Board does vote on that as, as an action item.
Exactly.
Right.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions on the?
On this?
Yes.
But I have on Section 3000.
That's fine. Any other on the 3000s? Other, Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so actually, I thought Mr. Perry Bruno was going to get back to me on this, but 3242, Professional Development. My question is, why not a similar policy for administrators? And I listed a whole bunch of policies that appear, sometimes in the 1s, sometimes in the 3s, sometimes in the 4s, that would appear to belong in each section but were not given to us. And so I don't know if there is in fact a professional development policy for administrators because I didn't see it. If there is, I'd just like to know the number. I would assume it's in the 1000, 2, 1,00242.
It would be 1242 if there is such a policy, you're correct.
But I, I, we don't have it.
We don't have it.
The, the answer I, I hear is that you don't, you don't have a, you don't have a professional development policy for administrators.
We don't have 1242.
Yeah, we don't.
There is such a thing. They did what we're saying.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It is, does Neola have the policy? I know we don't, but as long as Neola has one with respect to administrators.
I don't believe we do. And I can tell you that in, in regard to your general comment about some policies appear in all three sections and some only appear in one, there are several reasons for that. One is that, for example, in the Instructional Section, the 3000 section, there are policies that deal with certification. That issue is not, not present in the 4000 series or the 1000 series. There are other issues that involve, in the 3000 and 4000 sections, involve collective bargaining rights established by contract. That would not be the case in administrator's sections because they don't bargain collectively. So there, the ones where there are, they are exactly the same is, is in the ones that involve, for example, discrimination or harassment or that sort of thing.
But let me list the others that appear in the 3000s that do not appear in other policies. For example, 3310, Freedom of Speech in Non-Instructional Settings. There is not a policy for administrators, but there is one for staff. Benefits, 3240. There's nothing about benefits in the administrative. Personnel File, 3590. There's no 1590 that refers to personnel files. Is it in there? Or was it not clear when it was given to us?
I do have some follow-up. Some of those were in the process of being cleaned by Neola and are now populating in. We will revisit those.
Okay.
As for the Professional Development, if I may speak to that.
Yes, please.
Mr. Chair, I think it's important too for us to be mindful, while it's in Instructional, any of our school-based administrators must maintain their educator certification so they would fall under that professional development plan. And Legal Services is meeting with Professional Development to discuss the new master in-service plan, which is going to be changing its name. It's escaping me right now. So that piece is legislatively mandated, so that's why there's that policy, and it, school-based administrators fall under that policy, is my understanding, Tom?
I was unaware that the school administrators fell under that. I know that, that.
Their certification.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's a different certification issue.
They have an administrator one also, but we'll seek clarification from Professional Development on that.
Okay, great, thank you. Then, then I'm done.
Okay. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you. Just the same thing again on 3, 3112, Board Staff Communication, which also echoes in 4112 in the next section. Again, it's the, the bottom is still inconsistent. I get the, the part about collective bargaining, but again, this one just says, should not discuss personal grievances or complaints, it doesn't have individuals. Then the last one says individual personalities in 4000, 4112, so, they just seem inconsistent in that. I don't know, maybe just get rid of the individual and the individual personalities out of all of them and just, I don't know, for consistency, or add in individuals, I don't know what the Board feels like on that, so. But those three ones are slightly different.
We'll go back and make sure there's consistency across those three policies.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the 3000? Yes, Ms. Jordan?
The 3232 with the political activities, so do we have, I know we, when it comes through via email, we prohibit that, we'll send out notification that that is not permitted. And even like last night at our Board meeting, we had a public service announcement invitation, which was, come and purchase a ticket or whatever. Should that not be, I mean, that should not have taken place last night, and I think we really need to make sure that that is not, that that's in the policy, because that should not be allowed either. Where would that, would that fit into this? Mr. DePree Bruno? Or Tom?
If we can take a look at that policy and just, because the policy is pretty clear in terms of what the communication medium is, but I will review it just to make sure it covers everything that the Board is concerned about.
And maybe no one else caught that, but that was a little bit disturbing to me. So thank you.
She sort of walked slowly into that point. This is a history thing with, you know.
We should stop that.
Yeah. So I, I apologize, I was thinking more about that later, so.
Thank you.
I just have one thing.
Yes, Ms. Langford Fleming?
Policy, oh, I just pulled up Political Activities, Selecting Student/Teacher Policy 3120. And forgive me if this is just out of ignorance, but on phrase or paragraph three, it says a superintendent, it's talking about selecting student teachers, and it says the superintendent shall make the final placement of student teachers. That's a lot of responsibility for, not that he can't do it, but that's a lot of, is it, is it a superintendent, or who places the student teachers from colleges?
If I'm not mistaken, I'll defer to our attorney, but in the cases where superintendent is named just as superintendent, I think the assumption in the definitions is that also is superintendent or his or her designee.
Thank you.
And it is most appropriate that the superintendent point that out, or else he would have a whole lot of things to do.
That's.
He is correct. Our definition section provides that when the word superintendent is used, it means superintendent or designee.
Yep.
Any other questions on the 3000s? Let's move along to the 4000s. Thank you. Any questions on the 4000s?
This is an unusual section in that there are portions of this section which will be different from the 3000 series in that all, all unit members, bargaining unit members are represented in the 3000 series for collective, for purposes of collective bargaining. In the 4000 series, probably 90% In the 4000 series, probably 90% of the staff in the 4000 series, support staff, are represented for purposes of collective bargaining. But there are a number of individuals who are quote confidential, unquote, that are not represented in a bargaining unit and are not covered by a collective bargaining agreement. So sometimes their terms and conditions of employment would be different.
I'm seeing none. I have also none. I thought these were much easier to follow, reading them through, so, than our previous policies, so.
Are there other policies before you that we need to discuss today?
Not for this workshop, next workshop we will.
I am thoroughly pleased that I will be able to get home in time to see my grandson and play some chess with him this afternoon.
As we like to say, you're dismissed. Thank you.
Thank you. Wait, there is?
Yes.
So, if I may, so what I was speaking to regarding the political, so we're going to be looking at all of that even through the 4000s, correct?
I'm looking all the way through.
Yes, okay, thank you. Thank you, Tom.
I've been dismissed by the Chair. Thank you, Board members.
Yep.
I appreciate the way you do business.
Okay, at this point, seeing no other business, or you have, yes, good to work?
I beg your pardon?
I mean, do you have something?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
So I want to refer to the Neola policy 1410, which replaces our policy 5.021. In both of those policies, the reference to salaries simply says that the Administrator Salary Schedule will be the rule, so I don't want to use that word because I know that's not the word I should use, but anyway. And I'm concerned that we are adopting a policy without a process or protocol, and I'll tell you why. We went to Market-Based in 2018, and it was apparent by 2019 that it, there was a perception developing, and this doesn't have anything to do with you, Tom, so, okay. There was a perception developing that Market-Based was becoming arbitrary and capricious because there were no metrics that were used for the basis, no, particularly for out-of-education, no comps or anything else. So I went to the Board in 19, and I said, I think we need to have a workshop, I think we need to have a draft policy that will describe the tools and methodology for determining the market rate compensation, the process for review of and changes to compensation and limitations to it. And then I was going to ask the Board, so that was Mr. Doty at the time, and I asked the HR Chief Pruitt to come back and describe the process that she was using to calculate market rates. That, as far as I recall, didn't happen, but I went back and then started looking at Miami Day, Duval, Orange, and Broward to see how they do it. And, and most of them have set up some sort of separate class and with definitions in that class, and the decisions about market rate don't reside with one individual, for example, HR, they might reside with Superintendent, HR, and, you know, someone else. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to say that I think it's really important to staff, particularly as we're looking at some high-level hiring, I think it's really important that we have an understanding, and it should be in policy, because my second concern is that if you've got Market-Based with an elected Superintendent and you don't have policy, then you have no control over what that Superintendent is going to pay people that they put in place. So, so that was the message that I wanted to deliver. I would like to have a workshop, it doesn't have to happen tomorrow, but I think it's an important conversation for this Board to have, because I am aware it's been problematic in the past, and I anticipate problems in the future. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a very wise concern to be making, so thank you for that. If we could set up a workshop somewhere in the future, Mr. Superintendent. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I was just looking towards my Chief Strategy Officer, who keeps that workshop scheduled for you, he will get that added, and he and I will meet outside of this meeting to prioritize it.
Thank you. All right, any other? Yes, Mr. Fisher? Yeah, just for Board comment, just wanted to remind everyone that this Monday here in the Board Office at 10:00 AM, there will be Tanglewood, the Honor Society students are coming for a discussion with us, so I'd encourage anyone that can attend, please attend, so that's all. Any other comments? All right, at this point, having no other business to come before this body, I've seen, and seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned, the time is 1:46.